I will call this meeting to order for City of Walton City Council Meeting, December 12th, 2023, here at the Walton Senior Center. Good, did I get everyone's stand for amplification and push? Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day. Lord, we ask that you guide us as elected leaders. Lord, we ask that you let us make the best decisions in the interest of those who put us here. Lord, we ask that you keep us from pettiness and shortsightedness. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jivana, could I please get a vocal?
Rose Beach, here. Amy Long, here. Terry Courtney, here. Sherri Gaskill, Dan Martin.
Here.
Matt Brown.
Okay. A few quick announcements. January 1st, City Hall will be closed for New Year's Day. January 2nd, be a caucus meeting, 6:30 PM, Council Chambers and City Hall. I assume that's January. Be no events planning meeting in January. January 9th, there'll be a council meeting here at 7:00 PM, Senior Center. Excuse me, I need an approval of the agenda.
Much to approve the...
There you go, alright.
Not bad.
You're good.
Rose Beach, shall second?
I'll second.
If I could, could I please get an approval of...
They're voting now.
Rose Beach?
It's been a long...
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Alright, if I could, could I please get an approval of the previous minutes from November 7th caucus meeting and November 14th council meeting in the past? You voted to combine them, you may do so if you wish.
Motion to combine and approve.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Jivana, what's the Christmas schedule at the city? Are you guys just closed Monday or...?
We will be closed Monday and Tuesday. Sorry, I regret that one.
Thank you.
Well, says Collins. Call, Jane.
I have several things I'd like to address to you and the council now, or at least give clarification on, is that the time?
Sure.
At the October meeting that I was at, you were out of town along with Councilman Brown at Parks and Recreation Conference, I believe, in Texas. And I was curious as to what information was brought back to City Council and to us as citizens from that, and if there was any literature presented to council, and what the disposition of that trip ultimately turned out to be.
Well, most of, most of that, other than the exposition center, is classwork, gathering stuff. I know Councilman Brown's got a ton of notes. I've got literature on all kinds of things. We generally bring them back, they're available, but we don't go through a formal presentation to, to council, but tons of pictures, chair, mainly a lot of brochures. Biggest thing this year was probably bathroom center for the park, for the main park. But no, no formal presentation on that. But I'd be happy to share any, anything you'd like to see, Mr. Palmer. Got all kinds of it, I've got it from four years running, probably.
Is any of that information that has been gained, is that going to be used in the development of the park here on Church Street? Or what, you know, where are we on, on the development of that? As I understand it, there's been some hunting going on down there as well? Is that something that that park was envisioned for, was hunting grounds? Are all citizens allowed to hunt down there? I know there's a posted sign that says no trespassing of City of Walton. So, did the Parks and Recreation Commission or conference, did it relate to that at all?
No, no, there's no, I don't recall anything, at least no classes that I saw there have anything to do with that.
May I ask, because that was going to be one of my questions, has there been hunting there this season?
I hunt on the properties right next to it, on Brad Mills and Andy Parker's.
Is Brad Mills and Andy Parker's inside the city limits of Walton?
No.
And then my other question would be, a former employee, have, were they hunting on, on the park's land as well?
No, not that highly.
And then also, I wanted to inquire relative to the presentation that was made last month about the Gaines House and the good news that we all received relative to the revenues being sufficient enough to not only pay for the events that are being held there, but also producing an overage that assists in some of the maintenance issues at the property. I'm curious as to how the revenues and expenses are tracked for that? If that is a separate cost center outside the general fund budget? And what information is available to see how that is actually possible, given the number of events on an annualized basis that are being held there currently and the revenues those are producing to offset all the expenses to maintain that property?
Jivana may be able to help me out with this. We have an Excel spreadsheet on everything in relation to events and, and expenses. As far as it goes, that house has lost money for quite a few years just on electricity alone. This has been, we started with a push last year to try to do some events. Ultimately, we felt the last year was on the, it was a good start, but it was on the unsuccessful side. We've gone a different direction with a different coordinator, Paula, as, you know, as presented last month. I think we're starting to see a little bit of revenue, but I don't know that you ever catch up as far as, you know, you know, hope to break even or come close. I do believe that, you know, there's some, potentially some plans in the future that we might see some revenue on. Frankly, that house sat, sat for a few years before, before I took office, and even the first couple of years, you know, after I was appointed, before we started getting, you know, really into it. It had some wear and tear on it, so there was things to be replaced. So I kind of started off a little bit in the red there. But we do have, do have up to date, you know, positives and minuses, you know? We've got an Excel spreadsheet broken down into several different categories on that.
That is available on request at City Hall.
Sure.
I have my copy from last week if you're interested.
I would like a copy of that, just curious to see that. Because what the mayor's comments all make a lot more sense to me than a little bit of what I heard, and maybe I just misunderstood the part of the presentation, but, you know, there's no way that based on the number of events that that property is producing enough revenue to offset its expenses, in my opinion.
Mr. Palmer, I can clarify that a little bit. Part of the presentation to council at caucus was specifically related to the tees that were being served, were they breaking even? But not, like, we weren't taking into effect, you know, the keeping of the grounds, electric bills, all the bigger stuff that has to be part of the house. We were just looking at that one specific function.
Actually, and I appreciate that, Dan, but it was also the paranormal activity, which is a huge gain for the Gaines House. So that combined with the tea parties is the figures that we were provided last Tuesday at caucus.
Paranormal has helped, has helped a lot.
Anything that can be done that is a positive revenue generator, I think as a taxpayer, we're all, if we've been failing enough, I mean, maintaining a solar column like that is certainly very expensive, you know? And then, I just had one other question. I was just perusing the city website, I was printing the updated budget that was approved, and I saw, Mayor, you're a member of the Sons of the American Revolution. I am also, what chapter do you belong to?
I'm not very active, and I don't know that I've paid dues in a while, but I was in the William Arnold chapter. My uncle is a member of both the William Arnold and Simon Kenton. I just haven't had enough time to mosey down to Sherman, to go to any meetings. I don't know that I've been to a meeting in, I don't know, now that I think about it, it's probably been seven years, maybe?
So your biography on the city website, the site needs to be updated, but you're no longer?
I'm not really sure about that. I mean, an active, participating member, I mean, I'm a member of the American Legion, I don't get kicked out of the American Legion if I haven't attended a meeting or paid my dues, I'm still a legionnaire. So I'm not, I don't really look at it that way, and no, I would say not.
Well, the state registrar does not list you as being a member. What, you know that, so?
Well, I have a number on the scroll somewhere, so...
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department, Major Bill Mark?
Merry Christmas. Council has a copy of my report that summarizes sheriff's office activity in the city of Walton for the month of November 2023. There were a total of 962 law enforcement events in the city in November. Some of them have been notes, our deputies handled five 911 hangups, responded 18 armed drops, seven attempts to locate, four annual complaints, deputies investigated 23 auto accidents, conducted 36 business checks, attended 55 civil or criminal summonses, investigated two criminal mis- reports, nine domestic disputes, three reports of intoxicated persons, seven emotional crises, three juvenile truck pulls, three motor assist, they responded on two overdoses, three requests for information, conducted 454 stop checks, 14 suspicious activity reports, deputies investigated three thefts, all of which were thefts of contents for automobiles. They logged 22 traffic complaints in the city, made 56 traffic stops, two vacation checks on residents' homes, 12 vehicle complaints, unlocked 17 cars, involved 911 person calls, all called, they issued 56 citations and ten arrests. And also note, in addition to helping with the city Christmas parade, deputies participated in a CRAM the Cruiser with Great Baptist Church and the Bed Croakers, the moving forth. Thank you. Any comments or any questions I can answer for council or the audience?
I have a question, sir. Unfortunately, I wasn't here last month, but in October I had asked...
Well, that makes two of us, because I wasn't either.
Yeah, but I did see a Kroger. So, in the month of October, I had asked about purring potentially Beddinger and Catalina, right, where the stop signs are being ignored and it's a racetrack down Beddinger. Have, are any of these traffic incidents?
I don't know, I didn't look at that. But, but when you see a traffic complaint, you know, I think we discussed that, that we have a traffic complaint list that's distributed to all the deputies, and it's listing locations throughout the county that they're expected to do, you know, stationary patrol and monitor for that particular event. I don't know if, if this is, you know, any of them are reflected here, but, but it is on the complaint list.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
And Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Fire District, Chief Best, how are you, sir?
Good, sir.
Fair to Midland.
Good evening. City Council, Mayor, you'll have a report that breaks down individual tax costs and his going to be paid, as far as that, but just a brief summary. The month of November 2023, we had 119 VMS calls, we responded to, and an additional 45 fire incidents. Out of that, either of those incidents were motor vehicle crashes, and three of them were overdoses. As far as your summary that you have, your report, your summary, this is from January 1st, 2023, through the month of November. The fire departments responded to a total of 1,489 incidents. Of that, 779 incidents were within the city limits. Another 476 were in the Richmond area, 116 in unincorporated Boone County portion of our district, and 118 were in the Kenton County portion of our district. That breaks down to 52% of our total runs for the year of 2023 have been of the normal city limits. Anyone have any questions about any of that? I'd like to make, City Council, as well as citizens aware, on a sadder note, one of my firefighters and board members, Alan Jones, he passed away yesterday. The visitation will be from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Thursday evening, and Friday morning, funeral services will be given, that's going to be conducted at the Walton Baptist Church. And then burial services will begin with all the funeral services.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chief.
Yes, was he active, sir?
He did get diagnosed with cancer, so once he gets diagnosed, he had six, and that he was known of as able to be active as a firefighter, but he did remain active with the department, and he is currently one of the board members.
I'm sorry, will you restate his name?
Alan Jones.
Thank you, and you said Friday at 10:00 at Walton Baptist?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
He provided services to the citizens of the local fire districts since 2006. He'll be in this. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Cardo Engineering, Matt Bogdan. Matt, thank you.
So, monthly update on the bridge project. I got our latest round of comments from the state, mostly addressed, I've got a few project details from Gator Bridge. One of the comments the state had was verifying with Duke Energy if they would be okay with our, you know, our site access, hauling the bridge to the site and putting it in place. We talked about previously a few years ago, they seemed okay with it. This time, when I spoke to them, they, they had some reservations about our clearance from the overhead pole lines, and they said they wanted to relocate that line that crosses the tracks to have more, more clearance. They were going to get their design staff and, you know, come up, come back and exhibit to show what that might look like, I haven't seen it yet. They said that the city would have to cover the expense of that, but again, they did not provide a cost. Again, something to see, see how involved that's going to be. On road projects, we've got the asphalt contract paid out, except for the 10% retainage that we keep, you know, unless the council or Public Works knows of any areas that we might want to add, you know? In the spring of next year, I don't see any issue with closing that out, I don't see any issue with the work they've done. The concrete work, they got started, Eaton's crews got pulled off onto another emergency job elsewhere, they're getting back to it this week. There's a couple areas on University that still need to be replaced, and some odds and ends areas, water, water main repairs, stuff like that, it's a little on High Street. Okay, alright, so yeah, they are, they are back at it. They promised they'd get everything done before Christmas, and at this point, you know, if it's not done this week, I'd say we have to pull off until after the holidays, so we don't have any, you know, parking restrictions or anything like that around the holidays. And then, following up on the, our request for cultural recreational signs for the Gaines House, we did not meet all of the qualifications that the state has for interstate signage, you know, regular operating hours, angles and stuff like that. They did say that we would qualify for the, just signs on the state grounds, so, you know, like Main Street, Mary Grubbs, just the non-interstate signs. So, after the holidays, I'm going to get the staff, the RCT, and see what we can get done. We could probably at least, we could get some signs there at the intersection, and then advance, advance signage on, on 45. Then a couple quick things on the MSOC program. In the last month, I did a short training program for Public Works and the city hall staff to go over stormwater best management practices, just to, you know, have staff better, better equipped to respond to incident calls that come in, you know, complaints about construction sites, and be able to inspect those in the field and make sure that they're installed properly. And so, that does count towards our annual requirement for staff training that the state puts on us, so I'm going to try to, as long as I can think of fresh ideas, I'll try to, you know, have some training every year for, for Public Works and anybody else who wants to show up to meet that, so we don't have to send anybody else to pay to go out and have training classes and anything like that. And then the Borreco Street drainage improvements are in progress, contractors have been out there just putting the cat trails out, working on green. We set right, our right-of-entry agreements to all of the adjoining property owners, about half responded back and, you know, had no issue with it. There were several on the west side who did not grant access. So, you know, talking to the contract, we were going to focus our work within the parcel that the city owns, but if possible, try to chase that up the swell and just do some improvements on that, but we'll only go that far. But we'll stick to the area we can and do what we can to clean up the marshy area, so. Are there any council questions?
With the pedestrian bridge, are you, they talking about like moving poles or just moving lines higher?
Possibly moving poles there at the crossing.
Gotcha.
They said they, they kind of, they took a quick look at it and said, yeah, that's a little bit close for comfort for us. They want to keep 10 feet of separation, so they, they were going to take back their design staff and figure out exactly what they want to do with it, so I haven't seen anything.
Ken Muth called me yesterday, I haven't been able to return his call, but I'm sure that that was part of something. If not, I'll certainly get him involved.
Yeah.
Ken's a good guy.
It depends.
It depends a lot, ask Chief. Chief, tell you.
No, they're to move those poles on that, yeah. I mean, it shouldn't be moving very far.
It, it shouldn't be, it's...
Depends on how much slack's in line.
Right, depending on the circumstances, I've heard everything from 5,000 a pole up to out of the park, that was going to be 60,000 for a single pole, wasn't it?
That was with discount first.
Yeah, that was, that was municipal discount, so it's hard to say.
And how is, where are the residents? Sure they're glad that things are moving?
Yeah, yeah, I haven't, I haven't talked to any of the residents since they got started, but, you know, we have conversations with a few of them, you know, too, and they're just more happy than something.
Matt, will you forward me a copy of that PowerPoint?
Yeah, definitely.
Cool, thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir. Alright. Alright, first item of business is ordinance 2023-11, second reading in ordinance of the City of Walton, Kentucky, amending section 50.41 subsection E of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances in order to revise the procedures for water and sewer billing. Counselor?
Mayor and council, you can see in the middle of the page there, on the first page of the ordinance, the revisions that are being proposed. The major revision is currently our ordinance states that the water and sewer bills be mailed on the first day of each month. Some citizens, rate payers have complained that that doesn't always give them time to get their payment in, especially if they mail it by the 15th of the month. Typically, the meters are read well before the first of the month, so this changes the date of mailing to on or before the first day of each month, and changing the, the due date from the 15th to the 16th day of the month. And then, also, we're updating the service fee that our bank charges for bad checks to the current level of $35 instead of the 20 that it had been years ago. So those are the changes, you can adopt this ordinance by motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Second item of business is ordinance 2023-12, a second reading in ordinance of the City of Walton, Kentucky, amending section 92.03 of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances in order to revise the provisions pertaining to the adoption and enforcement of the International Property Maintenance Code. Counselor?
Mayor and council, you'll see in the middle of the first page there, the changes that are, are being proposed. Currently, as part of our city ordinances, we have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code 2015 edition as part of our code enforcement, and that code has been updated several times since then, and the code enforcement officer has recommended that we change our ordinance to use the most recent edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, a copy of which will be kept in the city offices for inspection. So that, that's what the changes amount to, changing it from specifically the 2015 to the most recent edition of that code. So you can adopt this ordinance by motion.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Okay, we have first reading, we'll also have another one. Got it? Yeah. Frogger. Third item of business is ordinance 2023-13, a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending chapter 92 of the city of Walton Code of Ordinances in order to provide that depositing of leaves, grass clippings, and other yard waste onto sidewalk streets and storm sewers is prohibited as a public nuisance and providing for civil fines for public nuisances.
Okay, Mayor and council, you'll see towards the bottom of the first page, the change that is being proposed. This is language that is being proposed to be added to the nuisance ordinance, and it's very short. I'm going to read it. It says, "No person shall sweep, blow, discharge, throw, allow, or otherwise deposit yard waste, grass clippings, leaves, sweepings, litter, or other matter onto a sidewalk, street, or roadway, or into a storm drain, sewer, gutter, or catch basin, or cause the same to be done." Councilmember Long has proposed this ordinance because, especially during the recent time with the leaves falling, a lot of people were shoveling or blowing, um, leaves. And then periodically through the year, we've noticed that people are blowing their grass out onto the street and the sidewalk, causing dangerous conditions. And I'll also add that we currently have, as part of the MS4 ordinances, it's not permitted to put that kind of stuff into the storm drains because that would be, is it called illicit? Illicit discharges, so this will stiffen that up also. So that's the first reading. You all typically vote on first reading. If you'd like to do that, you do that now.
I just have a question, and this enforcement would be through the normal process of citizens' complaints, correct? It wouldn't be placed in any other way?
Well, I mean, if the code enforcement officer sees that it's going on, he's eligible to write a citation or, you know, talk to the neighbors. That's typically how it happens. It would go into the routine code enforcement program.
Also, Councilwoman Courtney, we had a few years back, uh, it's, uh, we had a gentleman, uh, was being neighborly and blew his entire cul-de-sacs, front yards, out into the street and then blew them into the storm drain. And we had to have, we had to have jolly plumbing come, uh, I think it was jolly. Had to have them come on a weekend and, because it flooded the entire, you know, the cul-de-sac. It rained and it just started coming back, and they had to come and jet it out. And I don't know if you know anything about it. One, a Saturday emergency call, two, a jet machine from a plumbing company, but it was, uh, it was rather expensive. The gentleman, uh, he, I think he, he figured it out after some discussion with him, but, uh, you know, that was a rare occurrence, but I think this will give us a little teeth on that. I think it also, as far as the enforcement, in an event like that, this would apply.
So by observation of the code enforcement or by neighbor complaint?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see having the code enforcement officer just driving around looking for grass clippings on the sidewalk. Okay?
Motion to approve. What other words do I say?
Those are the words.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Includes business, uh, council comments. Councilwoman Beach? Councilwoman Long? Merry Christmas to you, Rose.
Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year. And it's been a really great learning experience, my first year on city council. I hope that everything that we've done and keep doing, good stuff. All of the, the events that bring the community together, I hope they get bigger and better with more community involvement. It was really fun to be able to be on Christmas on Main, because usually I'm working at those times. So that was very nice to see the public. And I love Main Street all decked out with the Christmas and the, and the window. Is that your windows in the AQW?
Yes.
Those are adorable. I mean, it just looks nice up there. Just like, thank y'all.
I agree wholeheartedly with Amy, and I would say just thank you for all those who participate and volunteer. Christmas on Main, I worked that evening, so I didn't have the luxury of coming. But my mom, who comes every year and hands out hot dogs, she said it was the best year so. Just kudos to the volunteers and the people that made that happen, the city employees. Much appreciation, thank you, because I heard it was great. Also, um, this weekend, this past Sunday, there was the open Christmas event at the Gaines House, which honestly, a lifelong citizen, I've never been there. And so going was pretty amazing. I felt like I was on vacation in Colonial, Virginia, walking into the home. So it was beautiful and, again, just great appreciation for a lot of people that gave a lot of their time in a volunteer capacity. It was absolutely beautiful. That leads me to, we were given, we were given an Excel spreadsheet on Tuesday at caucus. The math isn't mathing. If you want to look at the totals, I just sat here and added it. Javon is aware she's going to make sure the totals are updated. But where it looks like there's a combined income of 10-plus grand, if you do the math, it's right at 7,500, so just bringing that out into the open for you guys to look at. Merry Christmas to all. I love when there's community involvement and when our citizens show up here at this meeting, so thank you. And appreciate it, just appreciate the city workers as well as the volunteers who continue to make the city thrive, so thank you.
Piggyback on what Terry said. Went to the Gaines House for the open house first time. First time since '07 I've been in there, and it just blew me away how nice it is, both with just the quality of the house, the quality of the furnishings, which most of them are donations, are on loan, and just the volunteers that have put that time into it. It's just, I was incredibly impressed with how nice it was. And if you guys ever, if you have the chance and you haven't been in there, get in there. Yeah, it was, yeah. A lot of pride in that building. And, yeah, that's all I got. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Motion to adjourn?
Gabe's got to talk.
Oh, sorry.
I wasn't going to say anything, but now I think I am. Now, uh, as I said with the Merry Christmas first off, uh, and, uh, as far as getting in the Gaines tavern before spring, I'll get anybody that wants to come help me do some work on a weekend. As long as you like, as long as you can get on a ladder or hold the ladder for me. I've got, got a gutter I need to look at here. Other than that, I'm just talking, that's all.
I'd love to hold your ladder, Mayor.
There you go, Terry. I bet you would. Make sure my insurance is up to date. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Merry Christmas, all.